13-24-312-017 for $4,000 in net submitted by Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
Meeting to order for June 2nd. Madam Secretary, if you'd read the roll, please.
Here.
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 Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We have an agenda. Who'd like to take that business, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendations for the following appointments. Megan Hanem and Brenton Shavers for Leisure Services Commission, expiration date January 4th, March 1st, 2017. And those are both new appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on those two appointments. Any comments, questions, concerns?
No.
Alrighty. Seeing none, I assume we're all ready to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Those appointments are confirmed.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Mark.
We kinda like that one. Finance Committee meeting for June 2nd order. Madam Secretary, if you'd read the roll, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Here. Most approved agenda is proposed and also the approval of the minutes of May 27, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an agenda and the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We have an agenda. If somebody'd like to take that travel request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that. We have a request from Steve Curry for a confirmed space rescue class 24 hours at Albert City, Iowa, June 2nd through June 5th for $562.50.
And I'll second that. I think it's confined space, though, isn't it?
What did I say?
Confined.
Oh.
It's confined.
That's close. Confirmed confined.
Yeah, it's small.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Any questions?
Can I ask what that is? Because I don't understand it.
The confined space rescue?
Yeah. I mean, I don't understand what department it's from or...
Michelle Weener, CFO. It's hazmat training at the Regional Training Center. This is typical classes they do all year. Not very many of them exceed cost of $100, so they don't need to come to finance. This one is in Albert City, Iowa, which I looked up and it's extreme northwest Iowa. And for him to get there in the morning, it just doesn't make sense that he needs to go and spend the nights. And it's three days, so...
Confined space rescue is just what it sounds like, Steve. It's confined.
I mean, I don't know who Steve Curry is, and I don't see anything on here that tells me it's Fire Department or anything else. That's why I was confused.
Yeah, I think that's the type of... Normally, we do put their titles on there.
Sure. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Alright. Any other questions, concerns?
Nope.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Somebody would like to take the pre-oths?
I will take the pre-oths. And in number two, we have building and maintenance in the amount of $3,868 for replacement of 66 floor drains in the East 5th parking ramp. Labor to be completed by city staff. Leisure services in the amount of $3,093.60 for replacement rubber tracks for John Deere 333D track-mounted skid loader. Leisure services in the amount of $20,880 for labor and materials for sidewalk and golf cart pad replacement at Gates Park Golf Course. Leisure services in the amount of $12,000. Rental of portion of maintenance building space at 304 West 5th Street. This will pay for months. This will pay for the months of August, July, 2014 for the fiscal year 15 budget. And parking maintenance not to exceed $23,000 plus $250 shipping and handling for 20 double meters, four single meters, 24 decorative sleeves and bases. Upgrade meters around the five Sullivan Brothers building and Courier lot. Street department in the amount of $25,515.60 for crack sealer sealant. And waste management services in the amount of $18,436 plus $300 shipping and handling for the number one digester sludge transfer pump rebuild parts.
Second.
And can I make a slight correction there because it might cause some confusion? On the pre-oth for the rental of a portion of the maintenance building, it should be the fiscal 15 budget year, so it starts August. And actually, it's August because it's paid him on the head. But it starts August of 2014 and runs all the way through July of 2015. So that $12,000 covers a 12-month period. So there might have been some confusion about how many months that covered.
Okay. We have a... Thank you, Michelle. We have a motion and a second on all those items. Any questions? I have one. Sandy, can I ask on those parking meters? So those are the new ones, correct?
So we don't fall. Is this working?
Are those mics on?
Okay. Yes, this is the new ones, and we ordered the decorative sleeves and bases to go with them.
And so those are those double ones that we've been putting in other parts of the city, correct?
Yes.
The electronic, for lack of a better term. Haven't we had problems with those, a number of different problems? Like if it reaches a certain temperature, they no longer work?
That's with any electronic meter, though.
Okay.
We researched that when we purchased those.
Okay.
And anything below 0 or 20 degrees below zero, they just slow down and stop working.
So there's not any alternative, I guess, for lack of a better term?
No, there isn't. Because they're battery-operated, too, so it just stops.
Okay. Any other questions? David?
Question on the rental portion of the maintenance building on 304 West 5th. Do we not have any available space in any other buildings that we've vacated recently that we could potentially transfer that to and not incur this charge?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. This mic looked easier to access. That looked like trouble over there. We've been actively looking. We talked for a while about immediately across the street here, the building that Sandy's department has recently vacated. In discussions today, in fact, we found out that the police department has plans to use that for evidence storage and also for special ops vehicles. So they have use for that entire building. There are a couple other buildings downtown that we're going to spend some time and look. And I just talked with Noel, wherever Noel went, before this meeting. So we will spend some time and look and see if there's a suitable building. This space serves our needs well because it's centrally located in downtown. About the nearest other building I'm aware of is on 9th Street, East 9th Street in Sycamore. And that's a ways out. But we'll certainly look at that and we'll look at other options because if we don't have to spend tax dollars on rent, we won't. I should note that this does include utilities, so...
So it looks like a reasonable price for what you're getting.
I believe it is, and it serves us well. But again, if we can find something that's free, we'll go for it.
Well, nothing's free.
Exactly.
Paul, I was wondering, the space at 304 West 5th Street in the wintertime, is that heated? Does it have water? And does it have toilet?
It does not have restroom facilities. I'm not sure that we need to have that because we have other buildings downtown. There has been some discussion that that might be added. So that's an option in the future.
Are any of the buildings that are being looked at, do they have those amenities for the employees?
The one over here does, but as I said, police has that basically programmed. I'm not sure about the other buildings because I haven't been in them yet. I think part of... Some of our staff looked at part of the one on Sycamore today. I haven't looked at it yet. I'm not sure about what facilities that offers. I do know building maintenance has some offices or some maintenance operations going on in that building now. And I know that the long-term plan is for development for that site. So the idea would be eventually it would be transformed into something like housing condos, something along that line. But that's long-term. So again, I haven't really looked at that in detail. Craig, I don't know if you want to speak to the building. You probably know it better than I do. I've never been in it. It's up to you.
Yeah, he's gonna get up.
I guess the Craig Clark Building Official, the Sycamore building would have restroom facilities. We do heat a very small portion of it just to keep different paints and glues and things like that so they don't freeze during the winter. But the majority of the property is not heated. I guess at this time, obviously, the building is being used. The maintenance department is planning on moving out to the Public Works Building. So there may be some opportunity there for that building to be reused, I guess. But as you said, the long-term goal is to have that be developed, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Just if I could just close, we would appreciate having this approved so that we can continue to occupy that space for now. We're going to work with the mayor and other department heads to find another location. And if we can, it's a month-to-month situation. If we don't have a lease here, it's a month-to-month agreement. And we can move out if we find a better place. But if you don't approve this tonight, then you'll see us every month ask because it's $1,000 a month. So we would be here every month, month-to-month, which we can do, but...
So along those lines, though, can your lease be canceled if another tenant is found for that building?
I'd have to read the terms of the lease, but I don't believe so at this point. I think that we have occupancy. There's probably a notice required. I didn't bring the document, but it is month-to-month. We're working with David Deeds on that. I can get that information for you later.
I was just curious.
I don't think we're in jeopardy of being bounced out on a moment's notice if that is what you're asking. I think they would give us notice.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I assume we're all ready to vote. All in favor of those items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs. Those items are approved. Pay the bills this week, and the bills are $2,181,007. Two comma 181 comma 007.00.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Bills are paid.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good afternoon or good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, June 2nd meeting of our regularly scheduled Waterloo City Council in our newly remodeled council chambers. So thank you all for attending us and helping us break in the Harold E. Getty Council chambers to the first meeting of the remodeled chambers. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please, and get us started?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
You'll all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection and prayer, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Noel Anderson, our Community Planning and Development Director. Noel, please.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I would make a motion to approve an amended agenda. And that First Amendment is to add the hours of 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. instead of 6:30 to 7:00 p.m. for the request in 1.8.6. Also, I would like to add a 1.8. That's a Class B beer license permit application for Lost Island Water Park. Also, I would like to amend Number 9 of the regular council agenda for adding the location of 210 East 4th Street along with 212 and 214 East 4th Street. Also, with the approval of the amended agenda, I also move that we approve the minutes of May 27th as proposed.
Second.
I'll just note for the record that Item 1A6 and 1B8 were both added short of the 24-hour notice due to the dates of the events.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the amended agenda or the minutes of last week? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
I want to recognize our June Team Member of the Month tonight. Carolyn Salas didn't make it tonight to the meeting, but had the privilege of presenting her with her recognition last week. She's a library employee and just a real treat. We're very fortunate to have Carolyn on our team. She works a lot with the labor organizations out at the library and in that union and just does a great job of keeping everything kind of on an even keel. Carolyn is a great asset to the team. And Carolyn, if you're watching, and I hope you are, congratulations on being named Team Member of the Month for June. And thank you for everything that you do for the city. So thanks to Carolyn Salas.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, Items 1A through B7. Also with...
B8.
B8? Oops. 1B8. Also with the approval, I also move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Vice Chair.
Our bills payment this week are $2,181,007. Two comma 181 comma 007.00.
Second. Very good. A motion and a second on the consent agenda. Counsel, are there questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? This... Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lynn. 1A5. I don't understand. Are we approving that? Are we just continuing discussion or are we approving the abatement of the taxes or what are we doing? Yes. I would ask Councilman Hart to maybe explain that. We're asking for an extension. When it was tabled last week, it was tabled for one week. And we have some ongoing discussions. We don't. Councilman Hart does, and maybe he can explain where we are with that.
Spoke with the director this past last week. And basically, we want to table it again for one more week so that we could get some things worked together and bring it back before council so we can get that payment.
Thanks. Mr. Schmidt.
Well, I was along the same line. So do we need to have that wording in that motion or not necessarily on the one week thing? I thought as a rule, we like to have those definitions.
We could add...
Okay. Thank you.
For one week.
So moved. Second.
Okay, just for explanation, then, Item 5 is to continue the table for the African Museum payment for snow, weed, and sidewalk repair for one more week.
To June 9th.
Until June 9th. That's correct.
Okay. Perfect.
So with that, are there any further comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, please. It's a roll call.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. I will make note that we have two appointments to our Leisure Services Board tonight. Neither one of the folks are here. Megan Hanem or Hanem, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name, Megan, sorry. And Brenton Shavers have been appointed to our Leisure Services Commission, both on openings. So as I always say, it's so incredibly important that people volunteer for our boards and commissions and leisure services is an important one. So thanks to Megan and Brenton for stepping up and volunteering of their time to fill those spots. Thank you, Megan and Brenton. Item Number 2, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item Number 2 is a motion to cancel the hearing. As no bids were received, then that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located at 322 Crescent Place.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding that?
What does that mean, Mr. Mayor?
That means that we put that property... I'm assuming that's a 357A property. We put it out for... Excuse me, 657A property. We put it out for bid to see if anybody wanted to purchase it, to rehab it. But we did, so we are taking it off of that consideration, and we will, I'm assuming, demolish it now.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Are there further questions regarding that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Item Number 3, 4... I'm sorry, I'm in 3, please. Wait a minute, we're in the resolutions. 3, 4, and 5. Please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to adopt a resolution approving requests for authorization to publish 2013 salaries for city employees and officials as required by law. Number 4, I move to adopt a resolution setting the date of hearing as June 16, 2014 for development agreement with Howard Allen Investments for construction of a 3,750-square-foot commercial building on parcel 8913-36-408-013 northwest corner of LaPorte Road and Easton Avenue, adding $300,000 of taxable value to the site and conveying vacated LaPorte Road, street frontage in the amount of $1, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. And 5, I move to adopt a resolution also setting date of hearing is June 16, 2014. Request by Howard Allen Investments needing to vacate a portion of LaPorte Road, Frontage Road, generally located between Easton and Lorraine Avenues for the purpose of utilizing this area for development of budding parcels, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hart, council, do you have any questions regarding 3, 4, and 5? Roll call vote, please, on those three. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes. Very good. Those motions carry. Thank you. Counsel, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Let's do the last four resolutions, please. Someone?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item Number 6 is adopting a resolution approving development agreement with Elizabeth Blake LLC for the construction of a 7,500-square-foot industrial building at 2005 Westfield Avenue, adding $220,000 of taxable value to the site and offering a grant up to $40,000. adding $220,000 of taxable value to the site, and offering a grant up to $40,000 for sanitary sewer line relocation, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Item Number 7 is adopting a resolution setting date of hearing as June 16, 2014, for the request by City of Waterloo to sell and convey the four-foot portion of Lot 8, formerly 1019 Lafayette Street, to the abutting property owner at 1013 Lafayette Street, Danielle Rohrert, for $1-plus cost to legalize the housing setback and eliminate a common shared driveway setup, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. Item Number 8 is adopting a resolution approving the easement agreement between the City of Waterloo and Mid-America Energy of Waterloo, Iowa, to dedicate a new 10-foot-wide easement for the relocation of a gas line generally located at Lot 23 Morningside Edition in the 1600 block of Sycamore Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And Item Number 9 is a motion to review and approve to allow Main Street Waterloo to sell the Regional Business Center Building at 210, 212, and 214 East Fourth Street to C Doyle Properties.
Second. Very good, thank you, council. Do you have any comments regarding 6, 7, 8, or 9? Comments or questions regarding those four? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote on all four. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good, those motions carry. Item Number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wilper.
Number 10 is a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances for the City of Waterloo, Iowa by amending Section 6 of Chapter 2 General Offenses of Title V Police Regulations, that's discharging of weapons.
Second. Very good, thank you. Council, do you have any questions regarding this at all? We've talked about this at some length. No? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion suspending the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item Number 11, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by amending subsection 551, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets by adding subsection 416A, WCFN Drive, for parking prohibited at all times northwest side of WCFN Drive from Longfellow Street to West Airline Highway.
Second. Thank you, Councilman Hart. Council, do you have any questions regarding this item at all? Comments? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you. Item Number 12, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance number 5079, as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone on certain property. Rezone request from roof development of Waterloo, Iowa to rezone approximately 0.413 acres from C2 Commercial to C3 Commercial District to allow for the construction of eight brownstone style condominiums at the corner of East Third Street and Lafayette Street.
Second. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, questions or comments? Council. Yes, sir, step to the microphone, please, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Dave Schrock, Janesville, Iowa. I own the property at 309 to 313 Lafayette in Waterloo. And, first of all, I want to just point out, it wasn't just the church that is not happy with this. When I received this letter, the 26th, I've talked to a number of people that are on the council, I've talked to Noel, and I've talked to other people in charge, and I've talked to the mayor, and I'm not happy with it. I have no entrance into my parking lot, this is totally blocked. The garbage trucks can't get through off of Second Street because of, it's too narrow for Blackhawk ways to drive into. I'm concerned about the police and the fire department have to go back there. If they'd have to do something, they'd have to fight it either from Lafayette or from the church parking lot, because they can't get in. And, I also mentioned to one of the council people that when you have your Waterloo, your Friday Lou's and your Fourth Street Cruises, that whole area is packed with cars. And, again, I ate in town tonight, and I had to go in the restaurant to find out where to park, because everything's reserved in town, so... But, I just want to state that, you know, we're being totally blocked. I was told I could tear down my garage and make my own driveway, so I just wanted to be known that we're not happy. I've talked to a couple other people in the area that have properties that said they weren't even notified, and I got mine the 26th of last month.
Thank you, Mr. Schrock. Do you have any further comments? All right, it's, your comments will be noted, Mr. Schrock, and kept on file, council, or I mean, madam clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Lind.
No.
Very good, the motion does carry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. And I would just re-enter my plea, council, construction time is passing, and it does appear that this item is going to pass, even though there are objections. It appears it's going to pass, and if it's going to get built this year, we need to get started on that, so I would certainly appreciate a vote to suspend the rules, but it's certainly up to you. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Very good, the motion fails, we'll talk about it next week. Thank you very much. Item Number 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item Number 13 is a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance number 5079, as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property, and that's for the request by Candy O Church of Waterloo for a site plan amendment to the BP Business Park District to allow for the establishment of a new church facility, and for the construction of a new parking lot for the church facility located at 3211 Titan Trail.
Second. Council, do you have questions or comments regarding this item? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Very good, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Very good, and I will restate my hope on this also, council, there's been no objection to this from anybody. The church is waiting to get started on this, as is Craft Cochran, so I would hope that we could suspend the rules on this and the next item and move forward on these, but it is your prerogative, madam clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good, thank you, council. The motion does carry.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Very good, and I will restate my hope on this also, council, there's been no objection to this from anybody. The church is waiting to get started on this, as is Kraft Cochran, so I would hope that we could suspend the rules on this and the next item and move forward on these, but it is your prerogative, madam clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you. Council, item 15, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to instruct airport director to prepare plans, specifications, bid documents, et cetera, for the hang at Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second. Just wondering if we can do both of those.
Item 16, I move to instruct community planning and development director to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for asbestos abatement services for the following property, 223 Independence Avenue, 3137 Independence Avenue, 2375 Independence Avenue, 4012 Levercy Road, 210 Clay Street, and 421 Almond Street.
Second. Very good, thank you. Councilman Hart, council, do you have any questions or comments regarding 15 or 16, setting the dates of hearing? All in favor, please say aye. If both say aye, same sign, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, on 15 and 16, I move to receive and file plans, specification, form of contract.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. If both say aye, same sign, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, on both of those items, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specification, bid documents, et cetera, and form of contracts.
Second. Good, it's a roll call vote, madam clerk.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Good, motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on both of those items, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of bid opening as June 12, 2014, and public hearing as June 16, 2014, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plans, specification, bid documents, and form of contracts.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please, that's a roll call.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes. Very good, the motion carries. Thank you, council, and ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business for tonight. Tonight's city council meeting, it is time to address the mayor and council. With any business you'd like to have, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, I got a comment on about the oral comments. Last week, we had some comments going around the council. I thought it was on-call for, I don't think it was done in a good manner. I think that nobody should get up here, if you got a civil way of presenting a oral comment, that's fine, but I don't want to sit and listen to what went on here last week. I think that was really on-call for.
Thanks, Jim.
Bill Camire, 526 Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. The first thing I'd like to address is, I hope that they're going to put lapel mics on you people, because people like me that are hearing impaired can't hear you out there.
We have a fellow standing back there in the door that's adjusting the mic. Did you hear that comment, fellow?
We can hear you, Mr. Clark, very well, and that's good, but we can't hear the rest of you.